One more screen, one more watch.
One more screen, one more watch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda deletions or corrections? Moving on to the consent agenda, item number one. A claim, claims are at five, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and four cents, and charges at two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. B minutes to approve special meeting, nine thirty nineteen, regular meeting, ten one nineteen, and special meeting, ten eight nineteen. C, approve hire of Matt Berthick, network administrator, IT effective ten fifteen nineteen. D, approve hire Jacob O'Valeburg, temporary health death specialist, IT effective ten two nineteen. E, approve removal from payroll Preston West, equipment operator, one, secondary road, effective eleven one nineteen. F, approve removal from payroll Wade Henry, temporary seasonal secondary road, effective ten two nineteen. G, approve change in employment status for Barry Taglin, seasonal conservation worker, effective ten one nineteen. H, approve step increase Dwayne Carroll, equipment operator, one, secondary road, effective ten sixteen nineteen. I, approve step increase for Justin Ryland, equipment operator, one, secondary road, effective ten thirty nineteen. J, approve step increase Richard Boatwright, motor grader, operator, two, secondary road, effective eleven one, two thousand and nineteen. K, approve step increase Dennis Vareta, equipment operator, one, secondary road, effective ten two nineteen. L, approve temporary increase for job classification for Dennis Vareta, motor grader, effective ten two nineteen. M, approve application from Hill Building Heights, for Flo here of four hundred yards of one hundred and sixty-six place, highway on eleven two nineteen. N, set public hearing for eleven five nineteen at nine thirty-five a.m., amendment to chapter forty-one of Johnny Morgan. And I would give the date of our next reading date of November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, for that public hearing. I take the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moving to consent agenda. Second.
Matt Sire, aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item two, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, presentation by Heather Garcia.
Heather, I might just say quickly, this is a board that I was put on maybe four or six weeks ago that has to do with the Work Innovation and Opportunity Act. And Heather currently is the executive director of the Central Iowa Workforce Development Board, and I thought maybe we'd myself and then the two board members maybe shed a little bit of light on what I want.
Thank you Supervisor Shell. As Supervisor Shell mentioned, my name is Heather Garcia. I am the executive director of the Central Iowa Workforce Development Board. And I have handouts for the supervisors, just with a little bit of information about the current board members that we have. With the board, the board actually oversees the workforce development opportunities that are being put in place in the Central Iowa area, currently in the eight counties that are listed at the top of the case that I gave you, which are Boone, Dallas, Stafford, Marion, Madison, Polk, Story, Warren counties. And our board is divided into two parts. We have a chief elected official board, which typically speaks county supervisors. And we haven't had representation from Warren County in a few years. As I said, I've been on this job for about a year now. And we would love to have Doug come to our regular meetings and represent Warren County. Just to be quick, the main part that the board really works on is overseeing all the activities that are being offered to help job seekers reconnect with employment. So the focus is getting job seekers ready to go back to work. And although unemployment rates are really low right now, there are still a lot of people who are not working. And so they're training and services put into place to make sure that those people are up and ready and ready to go to work. And the main reasons that we like to have, and part of the reason that federal legislation has chief elected officials involved is so that you can voice the needs for your community and your county on behalf of not only the job seekers, but also the businesses. And it's also great to have public officials on the board so that when we need a voice, helping to advocate on behalf of the things that we're working on, it's great to have that. So it's not like you have to know every little bit of ins and outs of what workforce does, but to help with the pieces that you need to help and utilize and join that work in that whole process. So that's the quick version of what I would like to present to all of you tonight. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions, because I'm sure you potentially have a lot of questions.
So Heather, will this, this will convert to the WIOA? Is that what's the intention of Heather?
And with WIOA, that is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. That was actually enacted in two thousand and fourteen. Our state is a little bit behind on catching up with that act. Before that, we had the Workforce WIA, Workforce Investment Act. And so we were still kind of operating under that model. With WIOA, we are consolidating from fifteen regions throughout the state to six. And so we're now going to have workforce areas. For Central Iowa, that means that we're picking up three additional counties, which are Ottawa, Carroll, and that's three counties. And so Doug had the pleasure of attending a training where he was initiated into what is going to happen over the course of the next year that's going to happen very quickly and aggressively to get us up to speed with WIOA, which ultimately models after what the federal government plans for us to actually do for our state with workforce initiatives. You are welcome. And you have my card, so feel free to call me anytime if you want to come on down and talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item three, consider twenty-twenty county benefits insurance changes as possible action.
I think this one's me. Seeing no other volunteers, I'll just like it is. Earlier, I spoke at one of these meetings that the supervisors report detailing that for this next calendar year, every year the county has health insurance benefits to look at each year. I think we are limited by the COVID, the employee contribution increase expense at a two percent level. Frequently, the insurance premium that we pay here, the county exceed that sometimes by a great amount. And so we wanted to look at, just exploring all sorts of options to see if there's anything that perhaps Warren County could do to expand coverage. But also, because as we looked at the modeling for our county and our employees, what we noticed were that there are a lot of folks here within the county that very frequently use our health insurance benefits. Some use them a lot, some use them barely at all, some you have to force to go to the doctor. And so we wanted to look at what we were offering to make sure that what we're offering matches up with sort of the use, but also give employees benefits that are sort of in line with how we use them and be equitable in doing so. So when we looked through a variety of changes, we identified one more, one that many other counties and most other employers are offering, but Warren County was not offering, and that was a high deductible health plan with an HSA component. Fully understanding that that, that plan is not for all. But it is for certain people, frankly, when you run the numbers on it, for those that very frequently use medical services, it's a less expensive plan. And for those that use medical services and prescription drugs a lot, it is a less expensive plan because the max out-of-pocket for that plan is substantially less, it's much lower than that. So we wanted to find a way in which we could incorporate a high deductible health plan. And I fully understand that there's going to be a great deal of education that will transpire between now and then, but it's not going to be one of the plans that we're going to offer. And so we've added that to our list of plans. The other two plans will now be a fifteen hundred, or one thousand dollar deductible plan and fifteen hundred dollar deductible plan. But to incentivize folks, and this will be part of the educational part, and I'm not going to be handling, representatives from TruNorth will, and there'll be plenty of question and answer sessions, and we'll make sure that they're all up to speed in the event that they choose the plan. We are going to offer an HSA with county contribution that's in the Senate to offer, presented to the board. And TruNorth was kind enough to overturn my request on what the numbers that we discussed in our last special meeting looked like, six hundred dollar contribution for the employee to an HSA, a seven fifty for employer, employee and spouse, seven fifty for employee plus children, and nine hundred for family. There was some discussion, which I hope to have here tonight, we're either offering that on a quarterly basis. Frankly, if we did it January first or January second, our employees, if you offered, someone signed up to that plan and had a family plan, and we brought to nine hundred dollars into their HSA, and on January two, they must know that they're no longer going to be working for the county, that maybe doesn't make the most sense. And so there was some discussion about should we offer that on a quarterly basis? Or should we do it annually upfront? And I think the rationale behind doing year one on an upfront basis is just because there is going to be a greater out-of-pocket expense for our employees, for those who choose to do high deductible health plans. So for the first year, I think it makes more sense to do it upfront. And yes, we might have a few that find other employment, or whatever, and so we might have three, or five, or two, or one, or nine. But I do think that that's going to help people to just now know that there are issues there on the start of six hundred, or seven fifty, or nine hundred dollars, and that's the first couple offices are going to be taken care of, those first couple prescriptions life is going to be taken care of. So that would be my general thought. We do have a resolution sort of summarizing our last meeting. We have two of them, but I would welcome both of the requests regarding the contribution model of six hundred, seven fifty, nine hundred, and doing it upfront year one for that plan, and then moving forward to my preference, to then get into a quarterly deposit in our accounts.
I think the county doesn't have massive terms, so it would make sense to give them more initiative incentive due to HSA, so I would be fine with pretty quickly and handle frequently by this department.
I think in the sense of the quarter, the consent that someone can, to be exact, with, I don't think about the idea of major considers, if someone's happy, you want to pass it, and so. But we all are taught annually for different options to the county. And finally, the contribution of this, it's a good job, and, and.
And there's certainly, there's variables there, so we don't know who's going to apply for that health plan. And we certainly don't force anyone to apply for any health plan. We just offer them choices and provide education, and then they get to do exactly what the best for them and the family. And so using some different assumptions, if twenty-five percent and thirty percent, you can, you can get different numbers. Or I think the numbers of six hundred, seven fifty, and nine hundred, I think we'll all agree that that makes sense. The only thing I would say, and I agree with you Crystal, that going forward, and I understand that over the years it's not so. But I think that if the goal is to get people paying the least amount of cost total, and for those that either use health insurance a lot, for our employees, ones that fill up their max out-of-pocket expense every year, and frequent the doctors, that plan is going mathematically and factually to be cheaper for them, there'll be some pain to pay for that upfront, because it'll be a transition, and maybe not everyone has an emergency fund, where they can go for that. And so it's certainly more comfortable paying co-pay versus a twenty dollars versus a hundred and ten dollar doctor visit. But I do think that we will have better success for year one by incentivizing even that pretty much HSA contribution upfront. You can put that number that lets the family of four or five know that right out of the chute there's going to be a nine hundred dollar contribution into their HSA from here. Until they'll know that there's seven doctor visits, and some medications that in the event that they choose this path to lower premiums, they're not going to be responsible for those right out of the chute. I think if we don't offer that, perhaps instead of getting a twenty-five percent buy-in, or thirty percent buy-in, we might take fifteen or eighteen percent, and if you do that, I guess it's not that the anticipated savings to the county for the cost might be lost, and so I guess, since I think Doug was correct in that we don't generally have a lot of turnover, my guess is that perhaps one or two might, might hold out until January, or three, or call it, find something that's like, they're going to be a huge deal. They're going to play over six hundred dollars in the way.
The only thing is that if they are on a limited income, choosing this one, we're all going to save them money, but they will have to come up with the money out of their own pocket, and then reverse under, and then, which that's great.
All right, well, I accept the motion to consider the changes to our benefit insurance.
Don, I have two motions here. Show me and read the first one. All right. Be resolved, the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby approves calendar year 2020 health, dental, vision, life, ADD, STD, LBD, supplemental insurance policies as follows. Health insurance. A, eliminate seven fifty deductible plan. B, add a twenty-eight hundred dollar high deductible health plan with health savings account. C, two percent increase to employee contribution on one thousand and fifteen hundred dollar deductible plan. D, dental insurance, no change to policy. Vision insurance, no change to policy. Life, accidental death, this never been short-term disability, long-term disability, no change to county policy. There was one tweak, move voluntary life policy to sunlight, term light policy. And supplemental policy, move athletic products to sunlight supplemental. That's my motion.
I understand that.
Is that clear? Any further discussions? Matt Sire, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Second motion, regard, is in regard to the HSA account and county contributing resources to employees who choose the HSA and high deductible health plan. You define that six hundred dollars for employee, seven hundred and fifty dollars for employee plus spouse, seven fifty for employee plus children, and nine hundred dollars for the family plan. And I will add to the motion that for year one, to make it a little sum on the first of the calendar year of the second of the calendar year.
Yes, okay. This is item four of our agenda, sorry. Consider county contribution to employee health savings account as possible action.
I'm going to remake the motion that is on the record, and for those are the terms that we discussed. And I agree with you in that I don't like that there could conceivably be one or two of them that might game the system during the year, but I really think that we need to keep some of the efficiency of having it in this offering, if we don't provide the mechanisms that people are comfortable with. They know that they have serious hospital bills in January or February, that might be one of the detractors from signing that in the first place. And so, at least for a family, if you're looking at, it's very tough, and they know that the county's going to be a mighty tournament, that they're going to get a little palatable. But again, if it is not, whether you have a plan, that's, that's a, that looks free, your family plan makes sense, and a cheaper, the board would not, and there's two other ones that they have in mind. So I move my prior motion as stated.
Okay. Any further discussions?
I will just note that when I was at IFS probably in two thousand and fifteen, whenever I came on the board, I asked in a class of all supervisors, I wanted to change our health insurance, and then everybody said no. That's totally true, but, um, they didn't tax dollars, but.
Shell?
Aye.
Matt Sire?
Aye. Item five of our agenda is consider authorizing the chair to sign certain documents on behalf of the nine-one-one communications project as possible action.
As you clearly are aware, we are working in the county to secure locations and leases for the nine-one-one communications project. Along with this work, we are asking for receiving various recent agreements. Most recently, the WRA, which we approached to place a communications tower on their property, has offered a temporary right of entry so that the county can enter the property to conduct a survey of the premises the county would like to lease from the WRA. I would like to ask that the board approve a resolution that states there is a law that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes the chair to sign leases and no agreements regarding nine-one-one communications project, not to receive dollar obligation. We're going to have a bunch of these come through, I just want to find an easier way so those can use them by the chair.
Can I have a minute?
Yes.
I would like to move on to approve the resolution and ask that, um, second.
Any further discussion? Go home. Shell?
Aye.
Matt Sire?
Aye. Item five, excuse me, item six, is consider purchase of our thing, and I know the communication project that talked about. This too is related to the nine-one-one communications project. They said they want a local property owner who is free to sell a parcel of property to the county or place into the tower. And I'm asking the board today to consider authorizing that purchase of that property for twenty-one thousand dollars.
Number of answers?
Um, that is an interesting question, which is why we're going to have surveyed them. Their investment of five point seven acres and their investment of seven point five acres. This had been a section of ground where a highway had been placed, and then the highway was moved, so I think there's been some confusion as to how much it is actually there.
Can I agree to that?
Um, I can. Be resolved with Warren County Board Supervisors hereby approves the purchase of real estate parcel number two-seven-zero-zero-zero-two-five-zero-two-two-eight for the nine-one-one communications project per terms of the purchase agreement dated September thirtieth of twenty nineteen, and authorizes issuance of twenty-one thousand dollars to the unit as of the end of the year at the time of closing.
I don't know that one. Second.
Any further discussion?
I, um, I think way too often in doing what we do in county government and general, government in general, people, people, everyone's busy. There's sports and Netflix and all sorts of other things that pull people in different directions. And so sometimes people aren't aware of what, uh, how things get done and who's doing things. But for anyone who's remotely interested in this, both Doug and Don have worked exceedingly hard in making the nine-one-one project, come together, um, seven acres, six acres, and twenty-one thousand dollars. From the county's perspective, a very great purchase. I think that he deserves that one. And then Doug, Trump, Austin, Washington, too, because it's not easy to identify around. And frankly, um, the actual tower placement, I think all of that turned out exceedingly well. And so I just wanted to know, kudos and nice job.
Thank you. You better have that one.
End of.
Do you have a motion? There is second. Any further discussion? Mattenire?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Item seven, consider resolution in support of S M T C dash one-three-five D V A Omni Tel Communications Broadband Service Improvement Project with possible action.
Um, Crystal, a partner has emailed to me from Omni Tel, um, from a Ryan Nelson. Um, Omni Tel is working on a project, um, in the New Virginia area. And they are applying for a grant from the, um, Empowered Rural Iowa. And they've requested that Warren County Board of Supervisors look at this and, um, possibly give them a letter of recommendation and or resolution in support of their project for, and receiving their grant. So I took their letter and drafted it into a simple resolution of support for the project that reads, whereas S M T C dash I thirty-five doing business as Omni Tel Communications, parent Omni Tel, is established communication service provider within the state of Iowa. Whereas Omni Tel is applying for the Empowered Rural Iowa Broadband Grant Program for a project to provide improved broadband services by means of fiber infrastructure to areas of Warren County as depicted in the attached map. Whereas Rural Broadband Access provides local businesses and residents with greater opportunities, including distance learning, working from home, improved e-commerce, and telehealth services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby express support for Omni Tel Broadband Service Improvement Project to Warren County.
Maybe you want to move?
I don't know that one. Second.
Any further discussion? Joe?
Aye.
Joe?
Don?
Mattenire?
Aye.
For A, consider justice, tenure, and record evidence educational material with possible action.
Um, I'll do this one, too. November five, record evidence coming up quickly. Not a lot of time between now and then. And so, um, historically, there's, um, things we can and things we can't do as in our role as supervisor. But one of the things that we can do with that educational material, um, and so we have a lockup, I think. Because everyone has a fresh copy, I know that we were looking at a, you know, we're looking at some updates to it. But it would be my intention to, um, put that on our website and send a flyer similar to how, um, what's been announced prior to it. Obviously, I don't think it's quite in final form, but it should be by tomorrow, but, um. You know, like, certainly, um, um, educational flyer.
That has been submitted to the Iowa Epic Board as well for approval as far as meaning of guidelines for what the county cannot really set that motion.
And they haven't approved it yet?
Uh, they have, they have. Yeah, all of the drafts have been sent to them to make sure that it doesn't have anything that, um, tries to put in one direction or another, but it's educational in context.
And I accept a resolution to disseminate, um, the justice of the part of the educational.
Submove.
Seven.
Any further discussion? Joe?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mattenire?
Aye.
Okay, down number nine, budget report?
Full start of fund balances. Our general fund balance, um, showing down one point two million from nineteen thirteen, eighteen, including because we have one point two million now to Monrova at this time, um, which will be refunded with, with long of the. General supplemental is less than prior year at this same time. But we're not doing transfer to general supplemental. The dollars, tax dollars come in this year for supplemental. Um, other ones that have a large change, you've got now health services. We spent, we paid out more fund balance to the region at the end of last fiscal year. Um, secondary grounds, the way that their transfers are a little bit different than they have been previous with because of the location sales pass and how we reduce the tax collection. So there's not as much transfer as well as the timing of the fuel, um, uh, deposit. Um, REIT funds, we know that Conservation had purchased that ground last fiscal year. That's not surprising. Um, capital project supports is, is higher fund balance than it was last time this was because we, we issued bonds. Um, initially debt services is the first year that we've talked about debt service, so there's a balance in there as well. Overall, there's nothing that's, um, out of left for concerning at this time. If we look at expenditures, comparison between, um, budget and year-to-date expenditures, the departments that are showing greater than twenty-five percent, that's at the end of September, so we anticipate about twenty-five percent expenses. The auditor's office, they have annual agreements, so there's G I S and their Atlas and their I mother equipment that has been paid as a, um, leading quarter of the year. Um, sheriff's department, we talked about this last month as well. This one's running at a little high. We've got twenty, two hundred thousand in accrued invoices from the prior fiscal year for fuel, inmate costs, medical costs, brain maintenance, as well as overtime amounts are high right now. Motor vehicle maintenance and radios as well are all running high, so we'll need to watch that. The recorders office, um, they have annual agreements for the Eagle Recorder, crude archiving, um, expense. So that archiving will be due for last fiscal year. Part of that got paid out of this fiscal year. We'll need to amend for that. Medical exam, those are accrued state medical exam charges are running higher than they were last year this time. And then our general services, which forty percent of that budget is our property liability insurance that is paid at the end of July. So that should be running high at this time. Comparison between this year and last year, the amount of expenses, that was really difficult as most departments were different significantly than from the previous year, and all for various reasons. Um, the board of supervisors is showing down twenty thousand from the prior year. Well, that's because we had shared H R payment last year, but we don't have it so far this year. Um, auditor's office, the election president purchase, um, the treasurer's office, timing of postage and envelope purchases, and then that part-time person went to full-time person in fiscal year twenty. The attorney's office, those are wage increases. The sheriff's office, we've got those accrued invoices from fiscal year twenty. Um, county engineer, that one's always hard to isolate because the project varies from year to year. Veterans affairs, there was a retirement payout in fiscal year nineteen, so that budget's down in this year. Public health nursing, there was new open provisions in fiscal year nineteen that now haven't filled. The nutrition program is really just the timing of those food provisions and kitchen supply invoices. Medical exam, we had an increase for state medical exam crew charges. Wellness, um, those are just the times when the transfer was going to wellness. Districts, courts, um, multiple accrued invoices in fiscal year nineteen for sheriff's services that we don't have this year. Capital projects, um, that Monrova town payment, and then of course the justice center expenses that we didn't have last year this time. General services, unemployment payments, um, are high on fiscal year nineteen than they have been so far this year. Information technology is really the timing of those annual software payments. Warren County zoning, that's an increase to the wages and insurance. And then, um, the mental health administration, again, an increase to the wages and insurance. So there was a lot of variance between the two. That one's kind of difficult, difficult to isolate in the end. If we look at the revenues, um, revenue year-to-date indicate we less than anticipated. The auditor's office, that's election income that we received after November. The treasurer's office, interest income will increase as taxes are received and the fund balances grow. Attorney's office, fine fees are received later in the year, and that's what runs through that attorney's office. Expected that that'll gain as it goes. Welfare, that child welfare decat, um, those reimbursements are proportional to expenditures. So when expenditures are down, reimbursement is down as well. The September, on the county engineer, the September tax transfer is in the October revenues as well as the bridge replacement fines that haven't been, haven't been paid yet. And the conservation board, that REIT payment is not receiving from November. So none of the other revenues, um, were questionable if you look at non-departmental. That's where your tax revenues run through, and it's showing a forty percent in September. And so a lot of those tax payments actually cost us in October, so you won't see those. But we should be able to go over fifty percent by the end of October. Um, comparison again between last year and, um, this year. The, um, the treasurer's office, we have an increase to that interest transfer. The attorneys, the pre-collection deposit was less than the prior year. The sheriff's department, those accrued sheriff's fees. Having engineer, the timing of the broke use deposit. Public health nursing, there were approved rent payments. The nutrition and wellness are both increases to that budgeted transfer, so they're running higher. Capital projects with bond interest and, um, compensate loss for capital assets. Warren County zoning, the plating and building permits are down from prior year. And the non-departmental, those net changes in the tax collections where we decreased the rural, increased the law, there's supplemental, we added the debt, so there was a lot of changes within that non-departmental that is not going to be prepared this year for that. Are there any questions?
How much of the debt service we collected?
How much on the debt service? Um, to date, we've collected, at the end of September, we collected six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, off the top of my head, I want to say it's one point two million is what we will collect for that debt payment. Those stay in that debt service fund.
Um, item number ten, receiving five reports for a recorder fee that are compared, C, general expenses, and D, human support.
And we move to continue the final of the four reports. Second.
Any further discussion? Joe?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mattenire?
Aye.
Hey, item one of the supervisory reports, supervisor Joe?
Yes, um, since the last meeting, I had a few meetings with Warren County County Development. attended a city council meeting, attended a I M U, and of course, we've all worked on the elementary.
Supervisor Joe?
Yes, um, we have special meeting, about insurance. Um, I've now completed some interviews for some staffing positions. We have maybe one more to go on Thursday. It will be a decision at that point. Met with Tracy Stevens from the U S Census Bureau. Drafted a letter and sent it to the U S Census Bureau in Chicago on behalf of Warren County. Basically acknowledging that we are fully active and will do a county meeting, um, from, from the county. And so if anyone is interested in being a part of the Warren County, County Committee, please let me know. We're looking for some volunteers there. Um, additionally, she spent some time with me here at the office and we talked about some employment opportunities. Because I have a recall from her prior presentation that, um, five, seven thousand people were going to be hired in the city of Iowa for the upcoming twenty-twenty census. And memory served, she told me the starting wage was fifteen dollars an hour. And so I wanted her to explain that a little more and what that process was like. They are actively working for people, um, to work in the upcoming census. And so there's a website that, um, hopefully we can get up on our own page soon. But it is out there where you can fill out an assessment. And so they are looking for full-time, they are looking for part-time, they're looking for five or ten hours a week time. As stated, the minimum starting wage is fifteen dollars an hour. And so, you know, in my mind, folks that are making less than fifteen dollars an hour, that might be a good opportunity to build a resume or make, uh, a better wage. Um, sometimes those positions can lead to other positions, maybe lose your job. Work for people that are looking to maybe build an emergency fund or if you do ten hours a week, you know, by my simple math, it's, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars per week pre-tax. You can build a nice emergency fund or take care of the elderly and the dead. But it's, uh, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to get hired. She also indicated that, um, a lot of those positions are work-from-home positions. If you have an internet connection, um, there'll be some of that. And there's probably going to be some deference or, uh, there's probably some benefit that we're pretty close to the Warren two, they're at the office now, but in Des Moines. And so I think folks in Warren County have a pretty good shot at getting employed. The only requirements on, on those positions are you have to be age eighteen by the time of employment. You have to be a U S citizen, and you cannot give up. By my math, that probably catches a lot of us. Uh, other things, um, went to Norwalk City Hall. Went down to Milo and spoke to their city hall, their city council. And I was in Carlisle last night at their city council meeting. Additionally, between this meeting and the last one, we did have another work session meeting, uh, user group that I sit on. Finally started putting some pen to paper on the numbers. What I had pledged to you all was that I would work very diligently to meet the cost out of the building because we needed to get it down from the bid numbers that came in to date. And I did check the numbers. I required a couple of things from, from these people and from, from the users, and one which is, um, I wanted to be conservative in nature. So it doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't do us a great deal of good to say, hey, if we take out this one feature, you know, realistically, I'd say it's fifty thousand dollars. Let's just put two hundred thousand dollars in there so that it matches. I'd say let's, let's put forty thousand or forty-five thousand. Taking their numbers, they are conservative in nature. conservative in nature, um, because I simply refuse to have a second round of, um, bid date results like we did before. So to date, we are just shy of $2 million that are out of the building. I think we have another 600, maybe 700 to go. I want to be very transparent with you all because that's the way I'm using it. There would be hands or a real tie in some aspects with the redesign. So what went out to bid in July was an approximate 79,000 square foot building finished. Conceivably, you could say, let's make it 75,000 square feet or 65,000 square feet or some number to get to a lower number. We could theoretically have 50 beds versus 88 beds. I mean, you could, you could do it, um, but there's not as much benefit, and I don't think that's prudent or smart at all, um, but there's not as much benefit if you go from 79,000 to 77,000 or take 2,000 square feet out of the building. Because what, what you do when you do that, when you change, um, those walls, um, you're going to get into electric, HVAC, foundation, you're going to touch all aspects of the building. And what that means is you're going to get redesigned. You're going to pay our architect money, um, good money to maybe say 2,000 square feet, but in reality, when you pay the fees to redesign, um, you're not getting a dollar or dollar reduction, which is getting a smaller, less function of the building. And so the, the main focus has been to meet the cost out of, um, non-footprint for the most part. And so if people are interested, I'll, I'll give some examples because, um, I, I take this job very, very seriously because I think there's a lot on the line to make sure those numbers come in appropriately, um, on round two. And so we go through, and I look at it this way. First, I ask the question, does this affect functionality of the building? And that's a yes or no. If it affects functionality, it's already gets put into a separate category that we're going to look at a little closer. If it doesn't affect functionality, you know, it's really a need versus want, um, functionality versus luxury. If it, if it falls into what I term the luxury category, ducks get in on these meetings, you hear a lot of note. Some of the things that, uh, that I will highlight for the public that were in the last bid that are not going to be in the next bid. Ruler shades versus manual. The building has windows, some people have manual shades where you can pull the light switch or maybe the battery operated on the remote, and you can push a button and shades go up. That's a nice thing to have. That's not something that we have to have. Our current building has manual shades. I was in the assessor's office today and I saw him, I saw him in Vega's office today too, and, uh, it's, it's not a, it's not a requirement to have a functional building where if you pull the string and the shades go up or down, um, they still function. It was an approximate $30,000. There was the top rail that was coarse and has now become a solid surface, was a $10,000 change. There was metal wainscote. Scote.
Wainsco, wainscoat.
Excuse me. It was $107,000 to run that through the lobby. I think it's important not to have scuffed-up walls, but, you know, what comes down to functionality versus luxury, $107,000 metal wainscoting in our lobby didn't seem like something that we had to do back people within the bid in July. There's a lot of reasons why the bid in July came in high. Without cats, any blame on any of it, I'm just highlighting some of the things that are now not going to be bid at the next time, if I anticipate a separate. There's an approximate $900,000 savings by changing the thinset brick veneer design to a concrete, um, very similarly looking material that will open that, that aspect up to be bid on by more than the one mason in the state of Iowa who did the third part. That came in very high. That will have, uh, an exterior that will look almost identical, um, but there will be an approximate $900,000 savings to the, to the exterior. When I said earlier that I, I use conservative estimates, that's exactly what I did. Our architect says, hey, guys, we think that that changing the envelope of the building from that masonry product, something else should save somewhere around 1.5 million dollars. So if we're playing the numbers game to get the numbers down, it would look better on paper to say, 1.5 million dollars it is, let's roll with that. That's not the way I do it. That's not the way we're going to do things. We are going to get the building down in cost to a number that I think is feasible, financeable, and appropriate. And so we are, we are rolling with the $900,000 regardless of what, um, others have contributed if they can find save more. I hope it does save more. That would be a win, but we're going to roll with the conservative numbers. And the last one that I'll mention, and I'm telling you there's about 40 of these things, and all of them range from a thousand dollars to, um, exterior, big one, but 30,000 here, 100,000 here, if that enough, if that is quick, we're about $2 million today, was there was a wood feature wall in the lobby. And I don't know if anyone actually saw it in the internal ring rings. It was black walnut. It was about 30 feet tall and had lighting features within. It was beautiful. I mean, you, I don't have black walnut in my house. I show up handily as anyone else. I mean, if the building is going to be functional, if we put up the stone that said Warren County from the old courthouse and make some sort of a feature that was beautiful and tasteful and historical of the building without spending $118,000 for a black walnut wood feature in the lobby, I think we'll still have a functional building. Those are the things that I'm doing, those are the things that our group are doing. That is the way that I handle my business of the board in that end of the meetings because I pledged to you that we would get the numbers down. I want you to know that they are coming down. They're approximately two. I think we've got more to go, um, but if it's luxury versus functionality, luxury doesn't fare very well above it, Doug. Not now. So that's the plan there. I think we have another meeting set up for this week. We, we had, uh, another 18 or 19 ideas, um, so, and we still have some that we're trying to fix cost to. So when I say that we're going to get a building in the $34 million range at bid date, that is what we're going to do. Met with the sheriff today, met with Brian. I stopped over on 92 before I came in, and we talked about the building a little bit. We talked about some of his ideas, and he came up with some more and I told him, bring them to the, bring them to the next meeting. He said he had some carpet in, in his section that it was his preference to use polished concrete. Trazo floors are also not in this building. This will be a Trazo floor free building with polished concrete. But Brian said, you know, I think that the carpet in my offices are going to get beat up in a couple, three years, and I, I prefer polished concrete. I prefer concrete floor. It should be less money than carpet, right? I think so, Brian, but I'm not an engineer or, um, I haven't built one of these before, but I, I assume so. So we'll take those sorts of ideas. That's what we're working on, that's what we're doing, um, so that we can have a successful future bid base in numbers that I discussed with you all, that are financeable or affordable. And then frankly, um, if, you know, friends, farmers walk into this thing, I don't want jaws hitting the ground as you see a palace. Um, I, I think that'd be a disservice to taxpayers. Um, I certainly like nice things, but you have nice things and you can pay for them, and we're not in that, in that position. And so it'll be nice, it'll be beautiful, it'll be tasteful, but those luxuries are going to be gone. Multiple other conversations consistently are similar concerns, and I, I will, um, I, I will state that, you know, I've, I've heard from others that are still inclined on moving the, the project with overwhelmingly what I'm hearing from District One, uh, from my travels to Carlisle and Milo and other places, uh, when I talk about this, what I consistently continue to hear is that people are angry, people are frustrated, people's concerns really involve the cost of the building, the timing of the building, continued, uh, liability of transporting our prisoners and putting our, our employees at risk, and the more that, that, um, that we're talking, I think there's a real concern about the viability of alternative plans. And so while in a perfect world with a blank checkbook and no future fights coming, could another site be a, a great idea? Absolutely. I'm the first to admit, um, I considered those options and break that before I made a different conclusion. But what I hear from people, and so what I ask you and what I ask people that are watching at home is this, in the event that this is all for naught and the deal doesn't happen, the vote comes in terribly bad, everyone wants to move it, whatever, it blows up, you have to ask yourself one very, very important question, and that is, regardless of the estimate for a green side or an off-site location, I think everyone, whether you know it or not, historically, that was an area of contention, that there were a lot of fights over a lot of years before we got to this point. I don't see how we don't have at least some protracted fights, if in a different alternative location. But regardless, um, the cost, it's the cost. If the cost is up, and some people have estimated it at 40 million, you know, for argument sake, you could say it's 35 or 39 or 38 or whatever the number, you have to ask yourself this question. As the dust settles on this, if this blows up, as the dust settles, are the voters going to come back at a 60% clip exactly? Spend more money, spend more money. And if the answer is overwhelmingly yes, with all the certainty in the world, I think that's exactly what they'll do. They have so much confidence in us, they feel as though the leadership of Warren County has been so stellar historically and, and presently, that they're going to open up a checkbook and saying, here's a blank check, build it where you want to build it, build it, maybe if you need to build it, build it for the next five or 10 years, go ahead. If that's what you think, by all means, have that opinion. I choose to, I, I just talk to people, and I, I get the true sense that if the cost goes up, if we have a protracted fight over the location, it's my genuine opinion that it's going to be a no. If we put out a $38 million future referendum on a different site or $40 million referendum on a different site, with what certainty do we have that we'll improve that at 60% plus one? And if they don't, which I contend I don't think that they will, and if they don't, what do we know? We know that the cost to build a building goes up every year. It's construction inflation. So a $40 million building becomes a 42, $5 million building. If it's voted down a second year, if we become Dallas County, it's a $46 million building, and onward and on. The other thing that I'm pressing on, both in getting this out to bid and moving this along, is because we are at very low interest rates, and interest rates are incredibly important consideration when you're financing a project like this. There was a meeting back in August, uh, August or July, where we were approached as a board by our fiduciary, who's very bright, very big guy, and he pitched an opportunity to accept the quote-unquote good bids and reject the bids that were unfavorable on the building. And he said, you can reop, you can use premium reoperating and finance it all, use the 1.2, you can probably get it down to $35 million and just do it. We didn't choose to do that because there were things in the building that we just went through that I feel like are appropriate to be in the building to begin with, and so we needed to take some of those out, and we needed to make sure we're having a building that's viable today and in the future for the life of the fund, but that was an option. But what he said, he said something that really struck a chord with me. He said that the reoperating premium at that point in that interest rate environment made the total debt levy comparable by a couple of pennies higher. So that 3.5%, excuse me there, 3.5 million dollars, $4 million, because interest rates had come down so much from August to now, that was the cost of the interest rate reduction. In fairness, revenues have also increased some too, so it's not all interest rates, but let's say $3 million. If interest rates move up a percentage point between now and whenever the dust settles on, whatever gets built, that's two years from now or three years from now or one year from now or whatever, if we gave a 1% interest rate increase at $3 million, the number that prior to be discussed, therein lies the risk, the construction risk. Construction inflation is known, the interest rate risk is real but unknown, but I'm telling you, 1% off $3 million, and I sort of refuse to have a nightmare scenario where, where that's our future. I don't think it's right for Warren County. That's where I'm at. That's what I'm hearing from a lot of people too. But in fairness, you hear from others that would like to do something different. People also exist, it'll be interesting to see how the number five referendum shakes out. Thank you.
I agree with a lot of the staff. I've said a lot of that, and that is, um, my board reports for, uh, October, it's been about a month and a half. For the past two weeks, I've been, I met with outsourced counsel concerning personnel matters, um, also have been interviewing for the administrative clerk position, the board, um, and health insurance three-year-old meeting, in which we heard the results tonight, and our district board regional one, um, region one regional, in our office building committee meeting. And at our last regular board meeting, I said that I would give my perspective concerning the courthouse and jail issues. For me, the courthouse and jail started in 2015, when I asked for this, then, the state county attorney, does I hold and share my thoughts, what we should do concerning this issue? Mike Lewis, architect and representative of Shire Cutting, was hired after interviewing three different architectural and engineering firms. The money used to pay for this was set aside years prior to be used on a jail expansion project that never came to fruition. Everyone on the first jailhouse, the courthouse jail committee, grew to respect Mr. Lewis on his vast experience and knowledge in the nine months it took for our new assessment process. He knew things that we had never considered and pointed out what was good, better, and best for our situation. His 25-plus years of assessments, designs, and bills were a treasure of knowledge for all of us. At Board 2018, campaigning for the courthouse jail, Mike Lewis gave the presentation slides and copy points to members of the public to present the rest of you. I learned in January 2019, this very near, that Mike Lewis had given the board the range of 28.65 through 31.35 million for the total estimated cost of this project, so that then to either duck sheltering or just come up with a price, 29.9 million for the bond. That contract is available for you to view. Here, I'll put it at one on my Facebook. Then, in, uh, $1.2 million, dollars were set aside from our reserve, your tax dollars that you already paid, shouldn't be necessary to add to that project. No one in the county can build courthouse or jail, and we have leaned heavily on Mike Lewis for his expert advice and knowledge. Just before the Just before the bond passed last year, I spoke to a Clinton County supervisor, Dr. Love Banster. Clinton County took three years to go through their new assessment with Mike Lewis and kept the public abreast of every detail. Their first attempt passing their bond in May two thousand sixteen was successful. Mike Lewis and Shire Hattery, the third firm, when their bid came in at over six million dollars as supervisors, they felt like they had lives in public in asking for that bond amount that Mike Lewis had given them in the first place. I wondered if Clinton County's experience was an isolated one and felt certain that this was not happening to Warren County. I informed DCI Brandon Shelby of this possible issue because the SINGRA project was not submitted. Brandon told me that he do not hold architect's feet to the fire until after the first cost estimate. The first cost estimate came in at thirty-six million. I also need to tell you that Mike Lewis had two private meetings with me at Shire Hattery between the bond passing and December two thousand eighteen, asking if I would use reserves should the price come in over budget. I told him it would depend on how much over budget. In January two thousand nineteen, everyone associated with the courthouse and jail met. Mike Lewis informed the board that this project is costing more than originally anticipated and whether or not the votes going to reserves makes a difference. Being wise to what Mike Lewis did in Clinton County and completely about that this was happening in Warren County by someone that we trusted, I took the lead and told everyone that this building needs to be designed to twenty-nine point nine. I still had faith that Mike Lewis would come within our budget. We were supposed to go to bid in March equal timeframe, we went to bid in April. So later in the year you go to bid, costs are higher. In the Clinton County bill, Mike Lewis did not give a construction warrant to go over the design for true cost estimate before the bid was announced. As you know, the bid for our project came back at thirty-seven million, with two bids added missing and not concluding our construction warrants agreement, so we're talking about a building cost, building costing, costing close to possibly over forty million. Days before the board's subpoenas, unanimously voted to reject the design of the building and the thirty-seven million if bid on August thirteenth. Our county attorney, Doug Lachol, invited a youth group of the courthouse and jail and myself to inquire how others would vote. It was at this meeting that I finally told all the users that Mike Lewis had trained in Clinton County, and it seemed that we were going down that same path. Supervisor DeCoke met with our D E before the bid. Then on Friday, following our August thirteenth meeting, I was asked if I would be available for a closed session with our county attorney, Doug Lachol, or if he would disclose possible litigation from Shire Hattery. Knowing who were firm in telling Shire Hattery DCI construction workers that they needed to redo the design of their plot since they incurred those problems, they might be concerned. I called Clinton County, who was bottomed suit against Shire Hattery and Mike Lewis, and asked for their construction warrants. I invited them to our closed session since we needed as much help as possible in this matter. Before the closed session even started on August nineteenth, our county attorney, Doug Lachol, stated he did not want another attorney in the room. Supervisors at both inch and shall agree, so I walked into construction with Alex. I cannot tell you what the closed session was about, however, as a result, all three of us supervisors apologized for how we spoke when I was there. That same week, a supervisor from Carroll County told me at an ISAC meeting that their county had the same experience with Shire Hattery, Mike Lewis. It's common, it is two million plus over on their nine million dollar jail project. As the board, they found the money to make up the difference to calm the public and keep the project on time and in the end. Whether this current bond for three point five million passes or not, the board was in the dirt road and get the money, as the project just paid out, when they issued the twenty point four million dollars for the range of twenty-nine point nine million. That means you can turn it down, but the money can be obtained at a higher interest rate, and through our property taxes, we will have to make it up. There are very few accounting that I can truly trust. I'm grateful for the attendance that are here, but it's time that you know even more. Warren County, I am being as transparent as I can possibly be so that you can make an interesting vote. And now yours is kind of twelve public input, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and Warren cannot make any action on the comments due to the requirement of being loud, but we may be still in future. Now, public input will be allowed for any of the debate of the day.
Name Doris, just one second before you start, I just wanted to add something that I think is, you know, very important, that when supervisors all speak, it can be reflected from the public's point of view that each of us are speaking in our capacity, representing the entirety of the board. I'm not going to go through, I certainly didn't interrupt Crystal while she was speaking, and all of that would be a rude thing to do, but I want the public to know that from my perspective, there were some things that were stated in there, at least who respected whatever continuations regarding Mike Lewis or anything that was nefarious in other counties or whatever the alleged accusations were. I disagree with those. I've read the contracts. I understand the contracts. I understand the rules that each entity has within the contract, and so I wanted to make a point here without being rude and interrupting you, that there were some statements that were made that I'm not, that were not representative of the board from my perspective. I'm not sure how my other colleagues feel, but from my perspective, some of those statements, I think, could be perceived as inflammatory and inappropriate.
I'll change subject if you can.
All right.
The, thank you, and say thank you for the five, forty-six green real parkway that I called in and it's, we came in, it didn't look as bad as it was, because when they fixed it, I was amazed with how much, and I know there's a lot of vacuum under green real parkway, all the streets out there, but they took, it took a little bit to repair that small one, it's not as large as the one a couple of years ago in Old Young Mother Hills, again. And also I have another new one that hasn't worked on yet. It's eighty-two or three more drives. It looks like it's going to affect about four or five homes. So it ran a little, blocked off the hill a little bit, and the bottom is a green driveway. It doesn't hit the green driveway. And then we got the same situation, the empty parkway, there's water on the street all the time, they just wanted to dig it, couldn't go, and by getting five, forty-eight feet of parkway, you're getting closer and closer. It's six hundred blocks, and that hill, and that's going to be a big one when it goes down. And, I have a question, this, those two, that's who been fighting that for, since you guys were public. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris.
Name Dean Emery, the fifteen, three sixty-eight Gold Street in Littlewood. I'm glad you're secretly transparent. On this building that you're building, I think you noticed you put all the things that you're taking out, but you didn't put the fact in that unless you've changed it, that you're going to dig the basement out, put the judicial system in there. You didn't mention that, that's a cost that you didn't mention. Also, you didn't mention that the building is going to have to be built with attachments, which I understand is being built so you can attach that on east or west. You also didn't mention that the sheriff's department at eighty-eight, that's I think, with expansion, he's at fifty-five now. He averages ten more prisoners a year, so in four years, five years, he's going to outgrow the jail they're building now. So you're going to have to put your attachment in. And when you do your education thing, I hope you showed where that attachment's going to be and what it's going to do to that square. And you mentioned in one of your letters that if an attachment was going to be added, you were out. Apparently that's not true. So I'm just, I have a hard time figuring what we're doing here, because we're not totally being honest. We're doing the same thing as the last supervisor did. We're running up there to make something done and not be improving the cost. You said if we went outside the building, it'd be forty-two million. Okay, in five years, you're going to have to expand. And expands in five years, you're figures, it's going to cost more to expand. So I'm guessing, and I'll be a mathematician, it's going to cost, now I'm saying ten million dollars. So in five years, we're going to have to come back, and we're not even halfway through the bond that you're going to issue now, and we're going to come back and say, hey, we need ten one million dollars to expand. Now your option out of that, I guess, would be, well, we'll just pay the sheriff's fee for transport, which apparently we know now is two hundred and some thousand dollars, really high for fuel. So if you're going to be transparent, when you put your drawing up, at least put in there, here's where the attachment's going to be, because we're going to have to do it. And yes, we're going to expand the basement, and that's going to be just for the judicial And that's all I can say, because, you know, the first time is shame on you, the second time is shame on us. Focus on.
My elder partner, he doesn't really get into it with people. It's pretty easy to come up with stuff, whatever numbers you so choose, that's fine. Do what I did today. Go talk to Brian. Ask him if he thinks eighty-eight bid will go up five years or ten years or twenty years, because I do talk to him.
I did. In the last meeting, he actually said that he didn't think it would be enough.
I'll talk to him again.
Seeing that, moving on to August thirteenth, our next meeting date is November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at nine thirty eight. And fourteen, in German.
Go on. Start again.
Max seven, five, four.
Aye.